Are we live?
Yep, we're good to go, Chair.
Wonderful. Excellent. Well, good morning. Well, good afternoon even. I've done that twice in rapid succession. So welcome everybody to this Remote Meeting Development Plan Panel. My name's councillor Neil Walsh and I'm be chairing today's meeting. So I'd like to start the meeting today by confirming that this is a meeting of Development Plan Panel, and it meets the requirements of the council's constitution, even though members of the panel are in road attendance. While items will be fully discussed as is usual, remote attendance requires a few changes as to how I manage the debate. So as usual, folks, you're comfortable all this now. If you just move your microphones when you're not speaking, and that avoids any disruptive noises, any feedback. And could all participants keep, please keep their cameras on during the meeting, apart from if we've already agreed to dispensation, which applies to councillor Carter today. All our participants, we will be ready to introduce themselves at the start of the public session. I'll go through everyone, members and officers. So it'll be clear to public observers who will be involved in proceedings. And members wishing to ask questions and make comments should do so by raising, using the raised hand facility. We're not using the chat, as you know. I will try to be as super observant as possible. You know, but the actual physical hand with might, might, might be useful at some point in case I haven't seen you. I will endeavour to do so though. No, so we are on the internet. If there's any disruption in connectivity, we always appoint a deputy chair, and I move that councillor Ritchie be that deputy chair. Can anyone second the motion? Yeah. Excellent. Okay. Thank you. And right, so now I'm going to do our round of invitations. So you can my phone once you introduce yourself again. So councillor Anderson.
Councillor Barry Anderson, Adam Wharfdale Ward.
Thank you. Councillor Arif.
Councillor Sam Arif, Gipson Hare Hills.
Councillor Campbell.
Good afternoon, everyone. Councillor Campbell.
Councillor Carter.
Councillor Andrew Carter, leader of the Conservative Opposition, Carverley and Farquhar Award. Thank you for allowing me to keep my camera off. Just so people understand why, I had a bit of an accident on Saturday and better that you don't see the state of me.
That's, that, that's, that's quite all right. We're a very caring panel. Councillor Cohen.
Councillor Dan Cohen, Old Woodley Ward. And you may notice I also have my camera off most of the time, because the internet keeps booting me out of zoo rooms otherwise, but I will obviously switch on whenever I need to speak.
Thanks, councillor Cohen. We'll try to accommodate the problems you've, you've had there. Councillor Finnegan.
Robert Finnegan, Morley North Ward councillor.
Councillor Gruen.
Hello, everybody. It's councillor Caroline Gruen, representing Bramley and Stanley, and also Chair of the South and West Plans Panel.
Lovely, thank you. And has councillor McGinn caught up with us yet? He has. Hi Jim, introduce yourself, please.
Hi Chair, good afternoon all. I'm councillor Jim McKenna and I am a councillor for Armley.
Councillor Lisa Mulhern.
Hi Chair, councillor Lisa Mulhern, Asden Robin Hood Ward, executive member for climate change, transport and sustainable development.
Thank you very much. And last of the members, councillor Ritchie.
Good afternoon, everybody. Councillor Kevin Ritchie, Bramley and Stanley Ward.
Thank you so much. So let's sashay straight to the officers. So Jonathan Carr.
Good afternoon, Jonathan Carr, head of Development Management. Just to continue the camera problems, I can't seem to see any image of myself, and therefore I think my camera must have stopped working. There's, there's no accidents involved, but apologies for that.
Oh dear. Never, never mind. I've got a feeling it's going to be a technological afternoon. Martin Elliott.
Afternoon Chair, Martin Elliott, head of strategic planning.
David Feeny.
Good afternoon Chair, David Feeny. I'm the chief planning officer for Leeds.
And Nicole Walker's our legal officer usual, but she's away for the first half of this meeting. So subbing, we have.
Nikki Deol, Chair. I'll be advising the panel until Nicole Walker can join. Thank you.
Thanks, Nikki. Much appreciated. Nazrin Yunus.
Hi, Nazrin Yunus, principal planning officer within planning policy.
And Sarah Halliwell.
Hi, Sarah Halliwell, principal planning in policy, principal planner in forward planning.
Lovely. Thanks so much, folks. So let's go through our regular agenda items before we get on to our substantive items. So agenda item one, Tash.
Thanks Chair. So there are no appeals against the refusal of inspection of documents. Under agenda item number two, there are no items which require the exclusion of the press and public. Under agenda item number three, there are no formal items of business to do. Under agenda item number four, please could I ask that members disclose any, declare any disclosed or peculiar interest? Thank you. I'll take that as none. And under agenda item number five, I've received apologies of absence from councillor Collins, and we have councillor Cohen Harris substitute.
Great. Right, so that's all our intros done. Move on to our substantive items. So if you need to turn to your papers, it's the planning white paper. So as colleagues will be aware, I know it's going to lead off in a moment on the item. So this is effectively the third meeting we've had on the planning white paper, and it was a lot of discussion at the previous development plan panel, and since then, obviously we've had a very useful working group. I'd like to thank everyone that participated, and that was extremely useful. We got a lot of work done. Obviously, Matt's going to come in and say, but the planning white papers caused quite a lot of comment across the country. Including quite an interesting parliamentary debate on last Thursday. So for planning geeks and completists, it was under the backbench Business Committee, and it was brought by Conservative MP, I think MP for the Isle of Wight. And it's, it's interesting to to, to, to watch and observe and see how that was thought of. And lots, some of the comments were very much along the lines of what, what, what we came out with as a group, which was heartening to see that we're all thinking on the same lines and have sort of started to see that the problems and the issues of the whole. And former Prime Minister Theresa May did some extremely interesting comments. And there was a comment about a mutant algorithm coming up with housing numbers across the country, I thought was a good quote. And in fact, I think one of the Conservative MPs suggested that between Brexit lorry car parks and this planning white paper, the whole of Kent could soon be tarmac, which clearly exaggerated in a way, but we can see where he's coming from. And the Theresa May's comments were around the fact that he would concentrate development in the south and the south of the country. So we can see, it's not too dissimilar from some of the comments we had colleagues. So just to start off as, and I bring obviously Martin in in a sec, but just to start off from, from my chair's perspective, I mean, it, you know, the key, there's some key fundamentals missing from the housing white paper, which I think we've really, I think we'll see we've really picked out this afternoon during the course of this meeting. And it's, you know, it's a centrally dictated numbers into a policy and legal environment where developers have what looks to me like largely free rein, and allows them to get away with the absolute minimums. That would be my, my concerns. And to give you some idea of a key question that we need, we're pointing to government, is that, as I said, there are key fundamentals, this white paper just doesn't tackle our skirts around. Can come to your own conclusions as to why that is. But to give you an example, we talk about land banking and permission hoarding. Right. Now Leeds is a really good, good case study of this. So we've highlighted that in our report, and Martin's going to add a couple of case studies in. But currently, currently, the rate in Leeds is for every nine permissions we've given out, only one's been built. Now, I put it to colleagues that if that's the ratio, the problem is not the fundamentals of the planning system. The problems are the fundamentals, that everything that follows the planning system. And that's what the government needs to address, and that's the points we need to put across. So given that chair's preamble, Martin, do you want to lead off on this item, please?
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, so this is, the report's been pulled together by Robin Coghlan. But in his absence, I'm going to walk you through it. And we've got Nazrin Yunus and Sarah Halliwell, who have also been officers who have prepared this as well. So this item then relates, as the chair said, to the government, the council's consultation response to the government's planning white paper, which the government has described as a complete overhaul of the planning system. And members today are being invited to comment on the final draft response to the white paper, which is set out in appendix one of the report. That will then form the council's response and be sent to the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government by the chief planning officer, David Feeny, through his delegation on behalf of the council. So the draft response before you today has already been informed by a lot of consultation, cross-party member consultation through a meeting already of this panel on the 8th of September, discussion at council on the 16th of September, and a development plan panel working group on the 21st of September, where the broad thrust of the council's response was agreed. And subsequently, there have been emails of the draft emerging final response to group leaders to allow discussion to individual groups. And specifically, the comments have been sought from the council's Climate Emergency Advisory Committee, SEAC. And just for members to know that councillor David Blackburn has come back to me with a comment and asks that the response be fleshed out to detail the numbers of permissions granted against actual build-out rates by the volume house builders in support of comments at question 14 on delivery. Members will also note that this response, once agreed today, will be taken to the Infrastructure Investment and Inclusive Growth Scrutiny Committee as, as an item for information on the 21st of October. There's also been wide cross-council officer consultation involving colleagues in Economic Services, Asset Management and Regeneration, and also specific groups such as the Older Persons Forum as well. As well as engagement with other groups outside the council, including the Core Cities Group and West Yorkshire Combined Authority, and specific groups within the city such as the Leeds Gypsy and Traveller Exchange, who have expressed their dissatisfaction that gypsies and travellers don't warrant any mention at all within the proposals, and, and they're concerned that an already marginalised group may be further marginalised by the proposals and being set out here, including removal of the duty to cooperate, which doesn't allow for discussion between local authorities in terms of gypsies and traveller numbers. There are three main areas of the planning white paper which are called pillars. The first pillar is around planning for development. The second is around beautiful and sustainable places. And the third is around infrastructure and connected places. And as you will already have noted, the appendix one is quite lengthy. So I propose that we take each of those pillars in turn and then seek comments and questions on those as we go. So in terms of pillar one, planning for development, section 3.3 of the report covers this, and it relates to questions one to 14 of the response at appendix one. And the government's proposals here are around streamlining the planning process with more democracy, as they frame it happening earlier at the plan-making stage. Simplifying the role of local plans to focus on identifying land under three categories. Setting more development management type policies nationally, speeding up examinations, digitising the system so that people can understand it more, setting up a housing algorithm nationally, and removing the duty to cooperate. And the response at appendix one, as I say, questions one to 14, focuses on a need for government to be clearer about the purpose of planning, and to recognise that planning is a broad spatial function rather than a tick box exercise. There is support for a simplified approach to planning, but caution expressed about losing some of the key elements of the system that can drive quality, such as the role of politicians and the role of panels, and true engagement with residents rather than simply consultation. There's cautious support for the area-based approach, but it's noted that growth areas, which is where most development will occur, need more time spent on them to get better development rather than less, and it's not quite clear how that will work through the system. There's support for front-loading, but there's caution noted that if development proposals do change at the last minute, there needs to be an assurance that people have not lost the opportunity to engage with those changes. And there's also a need to clarify the difference between the growth areas and the renewal areas as well. As if the government intends the English planning system to be more of a zonal one, which I think some commentators in the press have badged this, like other European countries, it needs to be clear, because at the moment the, the white paper isn't clear about whether this is a fundamental zoning approach or not. There's also a need and stress that local authorities need to be able to set their own policies, and that there's a danger that development management policy sets at a national level may actually strive for the lowest common denominator in areas such as climate emergency, affordable housing and standards, whereas the council are stressing that there needs to be flexibility for local authorities to set their own standards on these issues and others. There's also concern that a more positive approach to cross-boundary strategic planning isn't put forward, and simply the duty to cooperate has been deleted without any understanding of what's going to replace it. And finally, it's noted that the proposals don't do enough to address the need for the volume house builders to deliver on the quality of homes that are needed at the speed that they are needed, and, and to fully address the issues with the land market, which were previously picked up in the government's last white paper called Fixing the Broken Housing Market, which recognised that there are a range of different players that need to be active in the housing market at one time in order to achieve supply, but also achieve quality through better competition in the market for land. So that's pillar one. In summary, questions one to 14. Happy now to take comments and questions.
Great. Thank you, man. That's really, really comprehensive. And like I said in a previous conversation to you, it, it pains me hugely that I don't have a lot to add to this, really. It's a really strong piece of work, but I'm looking for contributions from, from colleagues.
Yes, Chair.
Yes, Chair. Of course, off you go.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Chair. Councillor Anderson will ask some detailed questions shortly, but I think it may help speed up this meeting if I make our general position clear. First of all, can I say that I was very pleased when you initially agreed to my suggestion that we should have an all-party working group on this white paper and try as far as possible to send a communication from all of us. And the meeting that we had of the working group, I think was extremely helpful, and certainly it informed our thinking. However, developments since that time have brought us to, regrettably, to a conclusion that we cannot sign your response, but will do what we intended to do initially and submit our own, which is at the final draft stage. A lot of what we will be saying to the government does in fact reflect what you have said. Some of it does not. But certainly as regards essentially mandatory set housing number, for example, we don't believe that to be right. And a number of other things, and Barry will touch on a few of them. But since the working group met, you have used a loophole to release green belt land that was put back in the green belt by a High Court judge. And I refer to the application on the City College campus at Horstford. You said at our meeting of the working group that if we have red lines, we should inform you to bring forward an application of that sort, which was forced to be contentious, and use what appears to be a loophole in planning law that allows us to effectively circumvent the ruling of a High Court judge is completely and utterly unacceptable. As you may be aware, I have served freedom of information requests upon the senior planning officer, the chief exec, the director of development, and the chief legal officer, and I shall be serving further FOI requests on elected members and other officers over this next couple of weeks. I think to have released green belt through a loophole merely underlines our fear about the whole planning debate in Leeds. And that is that the green belt cannot be trusted in your hands. And saving the green belt is one of our top priorities. So it's with some regret that I say what I've just said. But I want to add to that that the second item on the agenda today refers to a consultation already responded to. Why was that not raised at the working group? Because whilst it is to some degree a separate consultation, it is very, very wrapped up with the consultation we are talking about on the first item today. And I have to say that we've reached the stage where we think you're guilty of bad faith, and we're not prepared to accept it. And the only recourse we have is to say that we will submit our own response to the government, which will be in many ways as critical as yours, if not more critical. It will also be more constructive than yours. But to pull stunts like this, when I have my members coming to me and saying they fear predetermination of planning applications, and then to sign a letter to the government with your names and our names, I'm afraid is not acceptable. Planning has been a huge issue for our authority over a number of years since the development plan through the site allocations plan. It's created a lot of bad feeling, a lot of which I'd hoped we would have overcome. But you do nothing at all to encourage opposition parties to believe there is any possible basis for cross-party working when you use a loophole to release green belt that has been put back in the green belt by a High Court judge, simply is not acceptable. And Barry will go on to put some more detailed questions.
Well, thank you there, councillor Carter. The, an application being determined by a plans panel and area plans panel, frankly, has nothing to do with us responding to the, to the, to the government's planning white paper. And frankly, that sounds like a very long lecturous way of saying you don't want to sign up to a cross-party submission. Yet, this is sensible, it's measured, and you agree with it, yet you won't sign up to it. And yet apparently, it's Labour group that's playing politics. And if anyone believes that, I have a bridge to sell them. I think I'm going to bring in councillor Mulhern next, and then councillor Anderson. Those are the orders I saw the names. But it's very, very disappointing, councillor Carter. When really.
It certainly is. It certainly is councillor Walsh.
Andrew, Andrew, I'm speaking. We don't talk over each other on this panel. So I'm sure our experience should really recognise that. But it is enormously disappointing at a time when Leeds needs all of its elected members to stand up. The Conservative group is standing down. And that's very, very disappointing. Councillor Mulhern.
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I understood that we were going to go through the report in sections, so just let's really start making the initial observation that the officer draft response that we are looking at today, considering I consider it to be very well written, to be constructive. As you said, I think in your introduction, it's measured as well. I think they've done a very good job of trying to get a compromise in terms of the responses that they've received from elected members cross-party. I'd like to just reiterate your comments in terms of the cross-party approach that we've tried to take in drawing up a response to the government's consultation. And also, I'd, you know, I'd kind of just really support the points that have been drawn out in terms of the response in the section that we're considering at this point in time around ensuring people that they're not going to lose the opportunity to contribute and influence by removing the kind of later stages of consultation, if we go through that zonal approach. The, the fact that one size does not fit all, clearly different parts of the country, even different parts of the city have different needs. So I'd just make that point as well. Just to move on to councillor Carter's comments and to respond to them. Despite what has just been said, when we had the cross-party working group meeting, we actually had a very constructive discussion with everybody contributing in a, in what seemed to me to be a very consensual way. And then right at the end of the meeting, councillor Carter made it very clear his intention, submit a separate response from his group. So this has not suddenly come about by any discussions or debates that have taken place at subsequent plans panel meetings. Councillor Carter made that absolutely clear at the end of what had been a very constructive cross-party meeting. So I'm not going to take any of that speech that we've just heard on board as something that's come to light since, because he made it very clear at the end of the working group session that we had. I'll comment again later when we can see the items.
Thank you, Lisa. Yeah, I appreciate that. Right. Councillor Anderson.
Thank you, Chair. I'll summarise the points, because I will be submitting them in probably greater detail through to Martin, as he requested. But if we look at paragraph three, why are we including that? Why are we including paragraph three? Because that's what we should be doing as a council just now. Nothing's changing. The plan, the planning paper makes no attempt to change that whatsoever. That should be your bible already. That should be the first thing that you think about when you're applying planning applications. So why are we making that comment? Then you come to paragraph four. What value is paragraph four? It's just padding it out. You're not actually making anything constructive. All you're trying to do is make a political point, but you're trying to do it using officer speak rather than political speak. You know, so then if you go on to paragraph six, after the words related, relatedly local democracy, et cetera, et cetera. Well, that's the reason why a lot of the people in Leeds are disillusioned with the planning system. That's why a lot of councillors are disillusioned with the planning system. You should be reflecting back what you can do to help improve things, not just point the fingers away at people all the time. In question five, paragraph 13, there's no mention of the impact or the effect of the new morality. If you're not concerned, a lot of other people are very concerned at the role the mayor could take in overriding a number of things here. We need to make our stance very, very clear in that. In terms of paragraph 17, I think we need to expand this paragraph to talk about how we're going to give devolution to those areas that have got a neighbourhood plan, and to those areas that don't have a neighbourhood plan, that we will use a more localised unit. For the sake of argument today, I'm using community committees to give you an idea of the size of the unit that I'm talking about. Two, three, four word in size. So if you've not got a neighbourhood plan, I think a lot of this work should be devolved down by the council to be done at that sort of level. Then in paragraph, question seven, paragraph 26. Well, if you set realistic targets in the first place, we as councillors can then explain to residents why there are a reduced number of reserve sites. But it's getting, if you set the targets correct and use meaningful data to back it up, not just trying to pick on certain areas over another, which is what you've done so far, then we can. over another, which is what you've done so far, then we can't, you know, work together unless we get the targets set properly. Then in terms of paragraph 33, how about arguing very vociferously in here about the protection of Green Belt and minimising the use of greenfield sites? You know, that would make a great deal of difference. In question nine A, paragraph 42, if we get the design codes right, and as I said, if you've got them written and worked on by neighbourhood plan groups or these local units that I'm talking about, consultation should be positive. If people are listened to, they're more likely to agree, albeit reluctantly. But if they've been part of the decision-making process, they are more likely to accept what's happening. So if we listen and build it from the bottom up instead of a top-down approach, I think this can be very successful. And I would like to have seen us between arguments and like that. I'll stop there because if, if I understand Martin correctly, it was question 14 was the last one in this particular section. So I've got no more, I've got a whole lot of things that I could have mentioned, but I haven't. I tried just to paraphrase a general trend as to how we would have liked to have responded positively to this. If you'd accepted that the council needs to change as well. Yes, the government needs to change, but you need to expect, accept in your arguments that we, the council, need to look at our processes and procedures and point out that we will need to change. And this is our way we are going to deliver on the things that we, the council, have responsibility for, instead of you just pointing fingers at the government all the time. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Anderson. Although we'll point out, you know full well, that's not, that's not what the purpose of this report is. And I believe councillor Anderson, that you're using that as an attempt not to sign up to things that you all agree with.
Can I come back on that?
Interesting. No, you can't. So-
Why not?
Oh, all right then, go on. Councillor Anderson?
If you look at a number of the paragraphs in this document, they have nothing to do with planning. Not a thing to do with planning. And yet you've put them in. So what's the difference? Is it okay for you to do it, but not anybody, for anybody else to make any comments?
Give me an example.
We're not there yet, but at the very end, you, you talk about energy efficiency.
So-
You make a political comment about energy efficiency, not about how the energy efficiency could be done and how we can work. You were, for example, like me, were in a conference call with Northern Power about a week, ten days ago, which was constructive and was very helpful. Now, if you'd reflected back the outcomes of that in this paper, then fine. Yes, that's a, that's a sensible and logical way of doing it. But the way you've chosen to do it this time, you've taken the political angle rather than the constructive, let's work through it together, cross-party, and looking at how the different parts of the council can work together. That's an example, it's one example of where you've used the politics rather than the consensual way forward of doing something that most people would agree with, that we need to do something about the housing that we've got and making it energy efficient. And when developers are coming forward, not taking excuses from them. Now councillor Finnegan is usually the expert when it comes to Plans Panel, always asks about EN1 and EN2, and we get absolutely nowhere because the developers never want to buy in and discuss it at all. This is an example of where you've got an opportunity to say something clearly about it.
Well, it's an opportunity. So am I right in understanding you? Your contention is that you can't sign up to this submission from the councils as a whole because of a paragraph on energy?
No, now, no, that's not what I'm saying. If you look through the document-
Because it is quite an important response.
Through the document that you've got here, you are making political statements. You are pointing out it's the government that are at fault for this. The government are at fault for that. There is no acknowledgement that Leeds has a contributing factor in terms of what you're doing. You may comment later on, for example, about site notices. Nobody's saying you can't have site notices. Nobody's saying that you can't have manual systems to try and help those people who aren't digitally as happy as other people are. These are things that you can do. You could point out that we as a council will always operate a flexible approach. But all you want to do is turn this white paper into a government bashing organ setup, and all you want to do is argue for more resources. That's, it's like, you're like a broken record. Every time, all you want is more money, no matter what it is, it's more money to do this, instead of working smarter and working better and getting best use of the resources that you've got. That's all we are saying, is if you reflect and say for once, yes, we can do things better as a council, and you, the government, can help us by facilitating this, this would be a good way forward.
So there's no specific examples, you're going to mention that?
If you want me to go through, I'm not wanting to take up everybody's, I decided the best thing to do was to give headlines and then submit the comments into Martin after the event. If you want me to waste everybody else's time by going through them, I can go through it line by line. But I honestly do not believe your colleagues want me to go through things line by line whatsoever, because some of them want to make their own their own contributions. It might be contradicting mine, but that's fine. That's the whole part of democracy. This is the point we're trying to make. We want to have a debate about things. We want to improve the city. We want to work with residents. We want to get the best we can for the city. All you want to do is finger point at the government the whole time. And any, anything that goes wrong is the government's fault, and anything that goes right can only be because we are such a brilliant council. It doesn't work like that.
Well, your objection seems to be that we haven't written a document that this response is not asked for, this response isn't asking for. So that's really difficult to, to answer in any sort of reasoned terms. It would be difficult by any objective analysis. And I look forward to reading your, your detailed points as to where this is too political. I, I look forward to those examples, councillor Anderson, I, I really do. Now, there's a substantive point about mayoralty, which I'm going to ask officers to, to come out in, to, to, to speak to in a moment. But councillor Ritchie's had his hands up an awful long time. So I'd like to bring councillor Ritchie in at this point. Thank you.
Thanks for that, Chair. I lost a bit of councillor Anderson seemed to be going on a bit of a rant towards the end. So I think he lost a bit of what we're trying to get across by, by doing that. But as I understand it, it was a consultation on the government's white paper. And that's why we've responded. And I think it, as it's been said in a fair and balanced way. And to take the point on site notices, because I remember I brought that up, my concern, and pointed out at the time, it may seem a trivial point, but there's definitely a move, a proposal in that white paper to move away from site notices and move to almost full-on digitalisation. And I'm glad that that's been taken on board and challenged. Now, I also, I'm glad that councillor Mulholland pointed out the, the comment at the end of the cross-party working group that councillor Carter made about submitting their own, because I had made a note of that myself. And I strongly suspect that this was the plan all along. And actually, by councillor Walsh, agreeing to that cross-party working group, that threw a curve ball into the Conservative Party's strategy, who are clearly trying to politicise this totally. And then councillor Walsh went even further, actually, by offering you any red lines. So you had the opportunity there as a party to put in your red lines. And I'm not sure that many were forthcoming. So I suspect, as I say, this was a plan all along. And you're turning this into, I think, a bit of a mockery really, because I think there is consensus. That meeting was constructive. There was consensus. And I think officers have come up with a, a good line in their report. And now we're just playing political games. And I don't think that's very fitting really for this panel.
Thank you councillor Ritchie. Yeah, I quite agree. And it is the case that I did offer that if there was any red lines, that there should be brought to us and spoken about. But clearly, that's, that, that didn't happen. And then this has rather happened today, which is unfortunate. Councillor Campbell's next. And then I will bring in officers for a response on the point for us.
I, I'm impressed with Andrew, actually. He's managed to effectively change the entire basis of our discussions this, this afternoon. I thought we were responding to a set of government proposals. And if you're responding to government proposals, I'm, I'm slightly surprised when you get upset that we have a, we, I suppose criticise the government for making those proposals. It seems okay for Theresa May to do it, but it seems wrong for us. Now, it is disappointing that we managed to, that they've effectively managed to shift the debate away from what might happen through the planning process to a spat basically about how supportive of the government they are. Now, I can't understand why we've suddenly become very supportive of government, or the Conservative Group has, but it may be something to do with the proposed office development, which may take place in Leeds in the not-too-distant future. I do hope that during that process, they apply for planning permission and actually develop it. Look, Chair-
Yeah.
I sat, I came to this meeting on the assumption that we were going to just go through this, this document that the, the, the all-party working group were happy to support, except for one or two little hiccups, rather than getting into a long discussion about how supportive of the government you can be, or how, how you can oppose the government. Can we actually move on in our discussion about what we're supporting, and what the people of Leeds would like us to do, which is to respond to the government's proposals to change the planning system, which we all think, and that's across the country and across politics, are wrong. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you councillor Campbell, indeed. And if you want to make any further comments on the report, the floor is yours. Councillor Campbell?
I'm fine with what we've done so far, Chair.
Oh, great. Wonderful. See, there is cross-party consensus. That's really good to see. So after that, shenanigans, malarkey and tomfoolery, I'd like to bring in Mr Elliott for a response to what's been said so far, and then Mr Feeney. Yep. Oh, David, do you want to come in first and pull rank on Mr Elliott? Or it's up to you guys?
It's fine, Chair. Martin will have comments to make as well. I just wanted to make a few observations. I think the first thing is, you know, it's good that we're having this debate about planning, because planning is a very important, longer-term activity. And I think part of our response is picking up on the importance of planning in terms of the need to leave a positive planning legacy in Leeds and elsewhere. I think the concern that we've expressed in the response from a, from a technical perspective is that the actual proposals as they currently stand don't go far enough to be able to clarify what the role of planning is. The way it's presented is that planning is the sum of a number of parts, rather than something that's more cohesive in enabling, enabling us to deliver the positive change, which talks to the agenda of sustainability, climate emergency, financial inclusion, and, and public health and wellbeing. So part of our response is to try and articulate clearly how those matters need to be connected up. And I think with that in mind, that just a response to some of the points that councillor Anderson raised, the issue of the mayoral election, I think one of the points we've raised from a, a technical perspective is that the planning white paper as it stands doesn't really acknowledge the existence of the spatial development strategies, which is a requirement of combined authorities. And it's merely seeking through our response to elicit some clarification as to how these proposed changes through the planning white paper sit within the context of the combined authority plan-making function. So it's, it's trying to articulate the need for clarity and certainty of direction and purpose. So, so that's really at the heart of the response we've made. And then just finally, Chair, on, on some of the comments that councillor Anderson's raised about localities and neighbourhood plans, I'm pleased to say that we have a very positive track record in Leeds of preparing neighbourhood plans. I think following on from the, the localism act back in 2011, we engaged very positively with communities both within inner and outer areas of Leeds. And we have a very positive track record of trying to engage with communities at that bottom-up level. And we've had some notable successes across the district in achieving that. I think the challenge comes with engaging with communities who are able and, and have a desire to bring plans forward. And that remains a challenge. Some communities don't have the capacity. Others perceive neighbourhood plans as having a different role. So there's a whole set of issues there, I think, in terms of being able to plan at that bottom-up level. But I think some of our comments that we've made talk to the importance of front-loading through the planning system to engage all the communities of Leeds in the planning process at a very, very early stage. So I think that's integral, needs to be integral to the process, Chair. Thank you.
Thanks, David. It's a really helpful contribution. Yeah, I think we are, to paraphrase, virtually a hotbed of neighbourhood planning as a city. So, Martin, can I bring you in? And can I draw colleagues' attentions to question 15 onwards? And I want Martin to take us through that pillar so we can make some progress. That'd be really helpful. Martin?
Thank you, Chair. So just in terms of pillar two, we'll be a bit, bit shorter on this one because it, it is a bit shorter in terms of the number of questions. So we're looking at, excuse me, questions 15 to 20. And this is the government's recognition in terms of the, the quality of what the planning system has delivered in recent years. And the English Housing Survey, for example, said that a lot of what the planning system was delivering was, was mediocre at best. And I think that, that, that follows quite in Leeds, for instance, a, a period of a five-year housing land supply being a driver for the ability of, of the council to, to enforce policies on quality and, and, and housing quality. And hopefully, a need to rebalance and a recognition that the system needs to be rebalanced in favour of sustainable development, driving the, the planning system rather than numbers. The, the government set out to do this in a number of ways and, and talk about design being front-loaded. They talk about design codes, and they talk about building beautiful. The response is, is welcoming of that, welcoming of the front-loading of those issues, but does seek clarity that design is considered in its widest sense and in its widest definition. And as members will all be familiar, within Leeds, the design of new developments and, and that concept of place-making is in place to deliver on the climate emergency, the health and wellbeing agenda, and inclusive growth agenda. And it's those agendas together, brought together through sustainable development, which create better places. And that balance between those objectives is what planning needs to focus on. And that will be different in, in, in different places and in different parts of the country. So as part of that, really, this response is about what's not said in the planning white paper, and what isn't as stressed as, as the need to deliver more housing. There's, there's an awful lot of emphasis on delivering housing. But the, the response does seek to sort of temper that with clarity of purpose on sustainable development, climate emergency, and actually what design actually means. So happy to take comments and questions on, on that. So that's questions 15 to 20.
Thanks, Martin. Yeah, it's really helpful. It's also, this, this section is a useful reminder, particularly for councillor Anderson's benefit, that the planning system, as colleagues will be well aware, that it is often a sort of a nexus point where an awful lot of societal and public policy issues meet. And therefore, our commentary on planning issues can often, is rightly quite all-encompassing. So I think that's one of the drivers of this. It is very, very difficult to answer planning questions in, in simple, narrow terms, because the questions you're trying to answer are often societal and civilisational, which I draw colleagues' attention to, say, for example, paragraph 90 regarding sustainable development and climate emergency, as you, as you know, is a key concern of mine. So, and it, by fate's happy fortune, councillor Anderson had his, had his hand up next. So over to you councillor Anderson.
Just very quick comments on there. In question 16, paragraphs 86, 87, and the first bullet point in para 90, I don't think you'd be there. Because if you take those out, I think the rest of the argument that you're making is very strong. I just feel that those, those particular ones there, actually just padding it out. The rest of what you're saying- really makes the point. And it's something that we agree with. We actually, we, we actually agree with that. That's why the, those are the only three parts we're suggesting be taken out, because we think the argument that you're putting forward in the rest of the paper is good. So if you took those out, you'd then be able to concentrate on the actual points you're trying to make. Thank you.
Okay, I mean, I disagree. I think often with really substantive large issues, one has to lay out the, the fundamentals to make them clear and to make them explicit and to put them at the forefront of people's thinking when they move on to the the more focus points. So I, I must confess, I don't know what you think, but I, I, I really liked the, the response to question 16. I think he goes to, to the heart of those issues. But if officers want to respond or not, or further comments from members? Barry, do you want to come in again? Is that a new hand or an old hand?
Must be an old one, must be an old one. But I mean, all I was going to say is, we actually support what you're planning to do here. All we're trying to do is, is refine it so that when the government are looking at it, they can see a coherent argument that what we are talking about in terms of sustainability is whatever, what is the definition that you've come up with, sustainable, sustainability here, it's not getting sidetracked. As someone who has attended a lot of webinars at the LGA, there is a vast views as to whether or not 2030, 35, 40 or 50 are going to be the correct dates, because it all depends on technology and winning the arguments with one or two other areas. So, but the other points you make about sustainability, I think are excellent. It's just this getting into an argument with the government over whether or not they are being, you know, 2050 is or is not the correct time. It's just, it's sidetracking. The important thing is to deliver sustainable development. And we can, if we choose to do something before 2050, we can do so. We can come forward with policies in our design codes that say we're going to go for 2030. We don't have to keep repeating the exercise. We should be arguing from the sustainability argument all the time.
Right, I understand what you're saying, I hear what you're saying, but in all candour, I tell you that you're wrong. 2050, as I've said, a multiple public environment. 2050 is a meaningless date with respect to climate emergency. It's a day pulled to the fore because it's mid-century, it's 30 years away. It's far enough away that a current crop of politicians in the autumn and winters of the years don't have to think about the fundamentals that they need to be thinking about. And none of the science Barry, none of the science points towards 2050 being a sensible date. We have a decade to make really, really big decisions, civilisational decisions, how we do pretty much everything. Saying 2050 is a dereliction of duty, and I can't really say it much more clearly than that, which is why 30 has to go in. I'm sorry Barry, because none of the science.
You've misinterpreted what I said. I said I've attended seminars where there's been a lot of dates mentioned. And I'm one of these people who do believe that 2050 is probably too far into the future. But what I'm saying is, there are, there are other experts who would argue that it was more realistic to go for say 2040, but ignoring 2050. So that's the point I'm trying to make. Let's not say that we are right, everybody else is wrong, because there are some specialists out there who feel that as a country, we can deliver a lot, particularly in the energy market, by probably 2040 and also in the transport sector by the same date as well, because of the long time it takes, lead-in time it takes. That's where these, if you listen to the LGA seminars, you don't have to listen to me, if you listen to the LGA seminars where you get people from all over the place talking, then they would say that 2030, in the current circumstances, might be a bit short because of circumstance is too far into the, the distance.
I, I mean, thanks, thanks, I, I hear you, I just completely disagree. And I just think the science doesn't lead to that. Just finish on this point before bringing councillor Mulholland and councillor Campbell. The problem with dates is that dates too far in the future speak to the worst angels of human nature. Dates that are upfront, that are backed by science, propel us, compel us to think to the better angels of our nature. And that's what we have to do regarding this. That's why we have to aim for 2030. 2040, 2050 is meaningless, 2040. Apart from the fact that science points towards we have to do a lot of substantive work before 2030. 2040, I think, gives just too much wiggle room for putting off decisions, deferring things. And I don't think we can wait for that. Well, I know we can't wait for that. So on that note, I'm bringing councillor Mulholland.
Thank you Chair, I really just wanted to speak in support of keeping those paragraphs in. And really, you've, you've kind of said a lot of what I was going to say, so thank you for doing that. We have got ambitious targets, but we've got ambitious targets for a reason. And that's because we have to act now. We can't delay acting on the climate emergency and leaving it for somebody else to do in 10, 15 years' time. The paragraph 86, I just maybe just suggest that we might want to add in there, as we have at paragraph 90, that the council signed up to helping to deliver locally the UN Sustainable Development Goals. So just similar kind of thing that we've got in the first paragraph, paragraph 90, where we reference Leeds' contribution to that in the same way at paragraph 86. That's the main point I wanted to make. I don't know whether it's worth at some point us considering putting some examples in from Leeds as well in terms of some of the work that we're doing, but we could do that separately.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we could, we could indeed. Councillor Campbell, and then we'll wrap up this section on questions 15 to 20. Colin, over to you.
Again Chair, I, I despair. For those of us who've been expressing concerns about climate change for a long time and have seen successive governments of all colours slowly kick it further down into the long grass. I am disappointed that once again we are talking about moving this date back. We can't really afford not to go for 2030. In fact, it'd be better to go for an earlier date than that. Because if you wait till 2040, it will have tipped beyond the point where we might recover. Now, Barry is right in that the local authority can, 2030 is its personal, personal, I forgot the right word, but it's its own benchmark for when we wish to see things happen. But if government doesn't sign up to the 2030 date, you know full well that various developers will use that as a loophole to argue against, particularly at a public plant, to argue against doing the works that are necessary to keep the planet running and to keep our children in, well, to keep our children alive. And it's as bad as that.
Yep.
And we, we just cannot dance around this and put it back for another 10 years. Now, I, I really despair Chair, I thought we were making progress. I thought people had got the idea that we really need to do something. But sadly, if we're having this discussion yet again about putting back the date when we really need to do this work, then once again, we're selling people short and we're jeopardising our future. 2030 is fine with me Chair, it's something that the, the whole of the country should accept. Thank you Chair.
Yeah, thank you, I very much agree. Councillor Finnegan, also councillor Finnegan, you know in the, on your screen, if you click on participants and it brings up the list down the right-hand side, then you can put the hands up. Thanks, I didn't see you put anything in the chat for ages, I apologise for that. Robert, over to you.
No worries. Fully agree that if we hit 2030, that's what we ought to do. I don't think there's any arguments about kicking it into the long grass, we can't continue to do that. What I would say is that we need a more robust approach to EN1 and EN2, which people will know if they sat on a plans panel, I'm obsessed with, because officers can never give any facts, can never give any details, can never give any confirmations and palm it off in terms of some condition and we'll have a look at it perhaps when these properties are actually built. EN1 and EN2 are modest in what they try and achieve. If we are going to achieve significant change by 2030, then EN1 and EN2 need to be taken more seriously. We need to have the evidence when we are looking at it via plans panel, that they're going to achieve these particular target sets. Or we perhaps need to revisit EN1 and EN2 as well to set even higher targets to achieve what we want to achieve by 2030. Thanks Chair.
No, thank you. And rest assured, the local plan review that's underway, separate to this, to this process, is looking extremely hard about how we come up with evolutions of EN1 and EN2 that are the best in the country, that are leading edge. And that's a genuine leading edge, not a Boris Johnson world beating category. So Martin, do you want to sum up on 15 to 20 and then move on, yeah?
Yeah, thanks Chair. I, I just wanted to make the, the point that what, what the answer to question 16 also tries to do, and, and, and it fits but doesn't repeat the answer that had previously been given to question 7A, is really ask government to be clearer about what they mean by sustainable development. Because there is a concern that that phrase is used in a different way by those that are seeking speculative development to that which the council use. And the expectations from sustainable development are different, but they shouldn't be. There should be very clear purpose of sustainable development and, and, and a means of measuring sustainable development, which is why part of the response refers to net gains and how these are to be determined. Now, there's a lot of good, positive work that's going on around net gains and measuring sustainable development within DEFRA at the moment. And the response does draw attention to that and seeks comfort that that will also be embedded within the government's revised approach to planning. Because as, as members will be aware, when we've been involved in fighting speculative appeals, the MPPF has currently written refers to a presumption in favour of sustainable development, which actually in some cases can allow speculative development to happen in rural areas and on greenfield sites. So it, it's, I think that's the intent behind seeking more clarity on that. If, if you'd like me to, if you'd like to move on to the, the final pillar.
Please.
Yep, okay, I'll invite Nazreen to, to introduce this. It's around planning for infrastructure and connected places.
Off you go Nazreen, we're, we're really nice, don't worry, you know.
Thanks councillor, well shot. So pillar three is planning for infrastructure and connected places. As Martin's just mentioned, there's a number of questions from questions 21 to 25. What I will do is just give a brief overview of the main issues and then go through the responses. Some of them are quite interrelated, so I don't think we necessarily need to go through each individual question to get, you know, an overview of what we're suggesting. So it is largely all about developer contributions this section. It's about amalgamating or combining section 106 and SIL into a new structure, into a new levy called the Consolidated Infrastructure Levy. The aim of it is to simplify and provide consistency. The, the government set out that they want to remove delay and support competition in the house building industry. The new levy, it is also suggested there are a number of options. It could be set at a national level, or it could be set at a local level. Or it may be a combination of the two, where the formula is set at a national level and then local values could then be added to reflect local circumstances for different local authorities. It's also suggested that the new levy could be set at final sales value to allow it to be more responsive to local markets. And also that land value capture is for, for the first time introduced to developer contributions. I'm not sure exactly, they don't set out how that would be achieved, but you know, that, that, that is a positive thing. So there's also, in terms of permitted development for the first time, SIL and section 106 would no longer be exempt. And the proposals, there is also a proposal to widen the definition of infrastructure currently that relates specifically to the connect between development. But it is suggested that wider use of infrastructure to, for example, the use of council tax and other council duties could be sought. Also, more flexibility has been introduced for local authorities to go borrow against the new levy for future levy, future revenue collection. The neighbourhood, neighbourhood fund would be retained. There isn't a lot more detail on the strategic fund. So Jen, I mean, in, in summary, there's quite a lot of strategic principles that are set out. What we don't have is a lot of detail as to how these would work. I mean, clearly we have a lot of complex sites here, how the system would accommodate, you know, section 106 requirements on brownfield sites and how that would work in terms of individual legal, legal agreements remains to be seen. So in terms of response, I think anything, you know, you know, to simplify the system is generally welcome. However, the detail needs to be seen. Land value capture is obviously welcomed as well. There's a concern that there may be a loss of flexibility in responding to marginal sites. And there may also be a lack of, the, the removal of the link between infrastructure and the individual site. The loss of that would not be well welcomed. In terms of whether the levy should be set at a national level or a local level, clearly, you know, I think the, the, the response there is collectively, yes, it should be set at a local level, because that allows us to be able to respond to our different affordable housing targets and needs. One size doesn't fit all, I think is the general overall response. Should the, the, should, should, should the system be allowed to collect more value or less value or the same value from developer contributions? I think, you know, again, the response is, yes, you know, we would like more value to be taken. But obviously that needs to be in the context of strategic viability and our growth plans. In terms of borrowing against the levy, we had a bit of a mixed response on that. Local authorities already have powers to do that. Our finance colleagues are a little bit more risk averse about that. Any, any, any borrowing needs to be managed with the risk that that poses to the local authority. So yeah, that, that is a quick summary. So if there's any questions around that, I'm happy to take, take those.
Thanks Nazreen, yeah, helpful as always. Looking for indications. Councillor Finnegan, thank you, yes. All, all yours.
Very, very briefly, in terms of, at this particular point, parish councils, town councils get 15% of the community infrastructure levy. I have read the white paper, I can't see any proposals in there about what happens there. So is there a safe assumption, that's just to offices really, that it will remain the same?
Folks, can I ask that?
Yeah, yeah, there's, I mean, there is no detail. I mean, in terms of neighbourhood fund, that's the only detail that we have, that that would remain the same. Anything else, it, it's not set out yet. And we would expect there to be a technical consultation as part of this paper, this pillar in particular, because there's a lot of nitty-gritty logistical issues that need to be ironed out. So, yeah.
Okay. To follow, as it were. Yeah, yeah, okay. There is a lot of that in this white paper. Any further questions? And I'm looking. Okay, officers, do we have any more points to cover over the last few sections? Martin?
So just, just, just Chair, just to say that subsequent to the, the paper being prepared and released, we had responses from our, our minerals team who really just wanted to, to, to flag the point that given, there's, there's a lot of promotion of house building within this white paper, there's a need then for a national statement on minerals and mineral products to accompany this and a sustainable means of quarrying and moving those minerals around the country to ensure that there's sufficient to support to that, that level of construction. And that, that kind of points to the, to the fact that there's, there's a number of elements of this white paper, such as around town and local centres, employment and other sort of planning areas, which it's hoped will be fleshed out through subsequent, subsequent government releases.
Okey dokey. That does, do we need to append anything? Well, are we going, do you?
So, 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 sorry, councillors. So there'll be a need then to reflect that point about minerals and the other matters section, which is, so it will continue from para 166. So there'll be a proposal to add a short section, other metals, minerals, to note the need for and request for consideration of a national approach to mineral extraction.
Okay.
To support the proposals within the white paper.
Okay. Mr Feeney, you want to come in?
Thank you, Chair. It was just to add a couple of points, I mean, just on the point that Martin's made. I think it's important that we do try and sweep up any other issues that haven't been specifically posed as questions in the consultation, because there are key areas which don't feature in the the current proposals and as part of a joined up approach, then we really do need to have coverage of those issues as well, because they are integral to, to planning at both a local and a national level. And it was just an observation, Chair, on the last two batches of questions and the discussion we've had. It's just to comment that I think a common theme in our response is about the need for further clarity. And I think generally, there is support for improvements to the system. We're not saying it's perfect. And there are opportunities to streamline and for it to be more efficient, but the devil is in that operational detail. And I think the questions we're asking are to try and elicit what that detail might be. And that isn't about over-engineering the points. It's about trying to understand how these matters apply in practice, given, given the range of considerations that have been made. And I think, just going back to the points that were raised about sustainability and climate change, we do need clarity on those points as well, because there's a danger of those issues just being conflated and not being clear. I mean, sustainability in its broadest sense is about making improvements to social, environmental and economic conditions at the same time. It isn't just approximating those principles. It's about actually making genuine progress against those issues at the same time. And the question of climate change and the climate change emergency is driving an imperative to do things more quickly in a more step change way. So those issues have to work together in a positive sense as part of the planning process, as well as related legislation as well. Thank you, Chair.
No, thank you, David. I completely agree. So there are a couple more progress as, as, as David has said, sweeps up the, the the last few issues, delivery change, climate change, environmental benefits, historic environment. Don't see any members wanting to comment on those any further, and we have covered those in some detail. Martin, could you remind me what our sort of constitutional responsibilities are with respect to this response to government?
Yes, Chair. So this, this response that that members give today will help David, through his delegated decision, craft a response on behalf of the council. So this is the draft response. I have taken notes of, of where that draft response needs to be amended from councillor Malheron in terms of noting that the council signed up to deliver the UN Sustainable Development Goals locally and to provide examples of that, picking up councillor Blackburn's point about fleshing out the numbers in terms of housing delivery within, within the city. And your point at the start, Chair, about the ratio of homes to completions alongside those points about minerals that have just been made and the points that David's just made as well. And as you recall from my introduction, just a point as well about the, the, the the hopes that this will also be accompanied by further detail on planning for gypsies and travellers, which the council's done quite positively in, in recent years. The white paper is currently silent on that aspect and for that part of the community. So those are the parts, points I've got. And subject to those, the Chief Planning Officer, through his delegated powers, can send the response on behalf of the council.
Okay, thanks. I mean, councillor Malheron wants to make an additional point, and then I think we can wrap this up.
Thank you. This afternoon, and in the interest of making constructive additions to the response. Under question 16, which asks about priorities for sustainability, talks about more trees, energy efficiency, less reliance on cars, et cetera. I was just wondering whether we might want to give some consideration to adding in a comment about the desirability of 20-minute neighbourhoods. It's been a concept that's been embraced in major cities around the world, Melbourne, Paris, cities as well, which basically is a concept of all of your kind of daily needs being able to be met within 20 minutes of your home, and that includes by public transport. So working side in public transport and having access basically to, you know, education, health and everyday kind of food shopping kind of needs within 20 minutes of your home. So personally, I think the way that's working in other parts of the world is really inspiring. I think I think we should aspire to do here in Leeds, and I'd love to see the government take that on as part of the response to this.
Yeah, it's a really good point. I completely agree. Because we're doing it in Leeds, but it'd make it a lot easier if it was reflected in, in national policy. Yeah, sort of, yeah, towards the front half of the question 16 kind of thing.
Question 16, yeah, to be where it would fit.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, sure. Yeah. Yeah, totally agree. Let's put it in there. Martin, can you come up with a suitable comment on that? On that, I'm mindful we have another, another item to do, so we have to sort of approve this, and it will be amended as Martin has indicated. Are we, are we content to do this? Elected members seem to be supportive of the document, and one or two members are not. However, broadly speaking, everyone else, apart from the Conservative members, are happy with the document and want to see it go forward. Good. On that case, let's do that. I'm not seeing any indications of dissent from that point. So excellent. Okay. So, thank you for that. That was very detailed. Right, so let me whiz on with my wee script. And item seven, so this is the government consultation on changes to the planning system. Now, this is coming, it's a different government consultation, because why have one planning consultation when you can have two going at any one time? Sure, as a planning, though, this is extremely exciting. But what I want to do is, Martin, just want to lead off on this. We've got 40 minutes, so let's give it our best.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Hopefully that it won't, it won't take too long. This is, this is brought to development plan panel members' attention. It's a technical consultation, which involves changes to the existing framework and structure of the planning system, so not requiring any legislation to bring it in. And it dovetails with a lot of the points that are within the planning white paper, but is a more technical consultation and, and actually had a shorter consultation period with the deadline for that passing at the 1st of October. So this is for information, because members may well have caught wind of some of this in the press. And it, I think, clarifies the, the distinctiveness between these proposals and those in the white paper. There are, there are four main proposals. The first is, is more technical detail on the changes to the, what's been referred to as a housing algorithm, which is the standard method for assessing local housing need. And members will see in section 3.2 of the report an illustration of what that would mean for Leeds, but also some points there of concern about what that standard method may do in terms of working against the underlying growth needs within particularly the north of England, where the algorithm does seem to be exacerbating already overheating housing markets within the south east of the country. And also stressing the need for affordability to be a crucial adjustment, which the government does recognise. The second, within para 3.3 of the report, is around affordable homes and the government's intention to standardise what it calls first homes as a means for affordable housing delivery. And the council, they're really making the point that within Leeds, there are key affordability issues, which the, the government's proposal for first homes won't really address. They simply aren't affordable enough. And the government's locally evidenced, locally driven approach to affordable housing has resulted in a need for 60% of all affordable houses to be socially vented, which would not be brought forward under a first homes approach. So the council really making the point that the first homes approach really shouldn't either affect the delivery of the affordable houses that we've locally assessed to be needed. But the government have suggested that there is more detail to be to be, to be provided on the, the first homes. Second, and relating to that, is a proposal from the government to help small and medium enterprise house builders as they deal with sort of post-COVID and the recession. And their approach is to support raising the site size threshold at which affordable housing will be sought from 10 to 40 or 50 units. So that means that smaller house builders or indeed house builders on smaller sites will not deliver affordable housing. Now, what that would mean is that we would expect to lose potentially nearly 600 affordable units over the next five years if that were to be implemented, given the, the size of the sites that we have that are identified and allocated within the site allocations plan. And the third point is around permission in principle and the government's intention to continue to extend the permission in principle regime and extend that to larger developments as well as those where they've already signalled permission in principle, for example, within town and local centres, so that there's an easier route for offices and other uses to convert to residential uses. It is worth noting that there is good news within that, though, and para 3.5.2 does note that, following the, the submission of the response, a, the Housing Secretary, Robert Jenrick, confirmed that new houses delivered through permitted development rights will now have to meet space standards. And members will remember that space standards formed part of the core strategy selective review. They're set nationally by government and local authorities can adopt them locally. Previously, they weren't applied to permitted development. But with this being an intended sort of increasing source of housing supply within local authorities, it is good that government is recognising that there's a need for them to deliver the same space standards as other homes. So the consultation response is set out there for information for members in the appendix.
Great. Thanks very much. Councillor Carter, I'm gonna, is that an indication you want to speak?
Certainly is, yes.
Far away.
Video off again. Can I ask, Martin, when this consultation was issued? And the point I made earlier in the meeting, why wasn't the working group made aware of this at its special meeting? Particularly as the algorithm yet again indicates, rightly or wrongly, a substantial difference in the housing numbers required in Leeds.
Martin, do you know?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, councillor Carter. The, the reason this paper's being brought today is for clarity to distinguish between two different consultations that, that were going on. It was considered that a lot of what is in this technical consultation was already fronted up within the planning white paper and that this, as a more detailed technical consultation, shouldn't necessarily form part of the members' working group, where there were quite considerable range of strategic matters for that group to focus on in terms of the, the planning white paper.
Yeah, thanks for that, man. It's, I mean, it was a working group for a specific, a specific thing. Andy, do you want to do a follow up?
I do, because you haven't, you haven't answered the question. At the beginning, he said that it was linked to the white paper that we've been discussing. The implication is that we aren't bright enough to follow the technical paper. I hope that's not what Mr Elliott's suggesting. And he also hasn't told us when, when this consultation was requested sent by the government. And can you also tell me who decided it wasn't to come to a cross-party meeting of members, please?
Martin, if you will.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. So the consultation was released by government on the 6th of August and ran to the 1st of October. And the, the, the consultation, as I say, was around specific issues which kind of largely formed a microcosm of those issues being considered as part of the wider planning white paper. There was no intention to hide this consultation. And certainly, the, the discussions that were held around the, the housing algorithm were in principle discussions, which sort of formed a response for the previous agenda item that, that, that we discussed. And I'm not suggesting that members can't follow technical planning matters by any means, but certainly given that the attention was focused on the planning white paper and the range of issues within that white paper. It was considered in consultation with the, the Chief Planning Officer that, that this wouldn't normally be a consultation that would necessarily warrant a discussion at a cross-member working group. But because of the conflation, potential for conflation between the two consultation responses, it's brought for information and clarity at this stage.
Thanks, Martin. David, do you want to come in, David Feeney?
Yeah, just, just to help clarify, I mean, in terms of responding to councillor Carter's concern, I don't think as a council, we're being compromised by this response going back in advance of the comments on the planning white paper. The planning white paper, as members will be aware, is a substantive piece of work here in terms of setting a new planning framework for, for the country as a whole. These related consultation documents are following on from a stream of material coming out of CLG. At present, we've had a flurry of activity from CLG. Some of the proposals have come in and they've just been introduced without any consultation. Some of the proposals have been brought forward within the context of needing to take steps, given the the pandemic and to allow for greater flexibilities. And some of the consultations are more set pieces. So we've taken the view that the planning white paper really is, is the focus of our comments. And if there are any matters which remain a concern to councillor Carter arising from the, the paper that Martin has just presented, then we can pick those up in addition in terms of supplementing the points already made, Chair, in the item on the planning white paper or, or at the end of that document in relation to, to other matters. And to some extent, it's, it's, in terms of the flow of consultation, it's a bit preemptive, I have to say, from a technical perspective, having consultation on points of detail before the principle of what planning is about has been settled in the planning white paper. So to some extent, it's a bit sort of cart before the horse in terms of planning legislation and change. But, but clearly, if there are any outstanding matters, we, we should be able to pick those up as part of the But, but clearly if there are any outstanding matters, we should be able to pick those up as part of the planning white paper response, Chair, if that's helpful.
It is, it is. And it, it speaks somewhat to the dysfunction we see in, in number 10 and across Whitehall at the moment with regarding to proper planning and public, get my teeth in gear, public policy in general. Okay, I mean, there is a flood of these consultations coming out. I would really want to draw colleagues' attention to the, the actual points that we've raised, officers have raised in, in 3.2434 and 3590. Is there anything members want to wish to add? I mean, the government proposals, with the exception of the space standards for developments under permit development, are wholly unacceptable to, one would hope, the vast majority of councils, that councils in Leeds. I mean, it's, the definition of affordable is just not affordable. And I think that comment, that's captured very well in, in the paper so far. So I'm, I'm comfortable with that. And is there anything else members want to add? I'm just looking, the reason why I'm staring through at your colleagues is I'm just looking at the paper myself now. And I think, yeah, I mean, speaking to first homes for a second, this looked awfully like the ones that were proposed in 2015 and not a single one was ever built. So that's a concern. And again, members will be really aware of the housing, the housing shortage, affordable housing shortage in the city. And we're confronted with proposals here where definition of vision of affordable is not affordable for people who need affordable housing in Leeds. And it looks like we could lose unestimated a further 600 units by these changes. That's absolutely hugely concerning for a city with such a housing crisis. We need to be gaining further 600 units a year as a minimum, not losing 600 units. So I think it's important we capture all those, those points. And under 3.4, I've just got scribbled on my notes, unacceptable, exclamation mark. Let me tell what that was. Yeah, yeah, I just wrote that, yes, the size threshold. So I think that is, it is unfortunate. And it's a shame because it's coupled with a boost, a desire to boost smaller, medium builders, which I think is, is a very good thing. Particularly as those builders tend to be more focused on some of the issues I'm interested in terms of low carbon and sustainable housing. So those are those comments. And I've got councillor Cohen indicating you want to speak. Dan, far away.
Thank you, Chair. I have to say, before I come to my comments, this is my first time for some time on development plans panel since it was chaired by other esteemed members. And I have to say, I didn't realise it was actually the councillor Walshall show. So it's been a fascinating, I didn't realise that, that every comment, we've got your commentary on how you saw the world. So it's been an intriguing meeting. Thank you for that. You asked if we have anything to add.
Yeah.
And yet I see the response was sent on the first of October. So I'm not quite sure, it's the second line on the report. I'm not quite sure what, what, what we're adding when we've sent it. I mean, I'm happy to note it, which, which is what we're asked to do. But when something's been sent, aside from the fact it's always lovely to talk for the sake of it, but it's been sent.
There are always ways of getting further contributions to, to government, to the chief planning of the government, you know that and I know that. However, it is what it is, as the saying goes. Do you have any further comments, members? Nope. Excellent. Well, I don't really think this has been the councillor Walshall show, but there you go. I think we're done, aren't we? Martin, Mr Feeny, officers, we are. Brilliant. Okay. In that case, I'd like to thank you for your contributions. And thanks to officers for their contributions and thanks to 7.2 billion potential viewers on the worldwide web. So thanks for that, folks. I see you at the next development plan meeting. Have a safe journey home, three feet to your kitchens. See you later.